Welcome to the special meeting of ISD 360 School Board. We'll call it the session with a roll call. Tony Corpius?
Here.
Emily McGonigal?
Yeah.
Bruce Rablin?
Here.
Ted Saxton? Here. Roxanne Spokes-Tedich?
Here.
Joanne Smith?
Here.
Jennifer Windows?
Here.
Kevin Grover?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I undertake a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved by Rox?
Second.
A motion by Rox and a second by Jen. The only, Kevin might have something to add. But just to make people aware, special board meetings, we can only vote on what's on the agenda and how it's printed. And that might come up later in the fact that any action item on here is not amendable. So the appropriate thing is if you, after the discussion, if you disagree with it, is to vote it down. And then the next time we meet, we'll have a different action item. Any other further discussion? There are none. We'll call it to a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry unanimously. Moving on to the discussion item. Discussion on plan for 2021-2022 opening of schools. You want to start, Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear that?
Did I go bad?
Do you want mine, Kevin?
I heard where. Can we get that turned down?
Okay, thank you. As far as, just so everyone's on board, there's going to be a plan put out similar to last year, depending on what decisions are made. Because obviously, once you make, I'm going to say one decision, it's going to affect, you know, many other things. Obviously, you know, distancing is recommended. Masking is recommended. Highly recommend, however, if you want me to read wordy. But I'm just going to give you some examples. If, you know, if we chose, you know, masking as it's worded on here, the next question is, what about indoor activities? You know, there's many more decisions to come based on what we do tonight. The other thing, if we do anything tonight, maybe I should say. The other thing to keep in mind is, and I've told many people this, everything's up for change, just like last year. Unfortunately, three weeks from now, you know, things could be totally different, you know. And so the request I had, and I appreciate everyone making themselves available, is we're starting to get questions, I'm going to say from all sides of the coin, if you will. Are you going to require, you know, we're doing this, if that, and so on. So at least wanted to get the conversation going. I have reached out. I have a pile of different things, you know. I shared with board members, there was some teacher input that was sought. And again, I don't even know where to start summarizing. The pair who submitted, June gave me a sheet. Again, pretty much all over the board, you know. People very strongly, one way, the other way.
And in the middle?
Well, yeah, the middle, you know, whatever. I've had, I'll be honest, I probably have five or six, you know, emails from parents, and again, people on both sides, you know. Some in favor of requiring, there's some that, you know, kid's not coming if they have to wear a mask. I did reach out to one of the neighboring districts. They don't, they don't feel, but again, they haven't voted or anything that they're going to require. Talked to several other superintends. Duluth was the first to come out. And that was before, I think, the recommendations even came out, where they were going to, I think, 12 and under mask, and then high school was optional. Whether that changes, I don't know. Other than that, I saw in the MSBA news briefs or whatever, where there was one district that took action to not require, you know. Other than that, I don't have much information of other districts other than, you know, conversation, just like we've had conversation. My response has been, I don't know where we're going to be. Quite a few, at least soups have said they think it's going to be optional. You know, highly recommended using that link. But until their board acts, I can't tell you a whole lot for sure. Yeah, and so anyway, that's, there's a lot more things to come once we start, you know, down the road. And again, nothing is final, so to speak. I mean, you know, you make it, if tonight, the action item on here, if that were to pass, it's pretty, I think, inside, we'll have more clarifying questions like activities and different things then. We'll try and, you know, figure out what we're going to do with lunches in both buildings. Again, you wouldn't be masked there, but, you know, we're going to distance as much as we can. But keeping in mind, you know, that everyone is masked. If for some reason that would fail, okay, again, then at the next board meeting, we would come back with something else. Either clarifying that it's optional, pre-K through 12. And the reason I left pre-K off this is because prior, 5 and under was not recommended to wear a mask now. And the latest from MBE, they say anyone 2 and over. So maybe, you know, that's something that should be clarified. We can clarify down the road, not tonight. But if that passed, we maybe would add preschool to the list. But if that fails, then we come back, do we want to, you know, based on what I'm, you know, going to hear tonight, are we, do we think we'd be supportive, you know, of under 12? Or maybe 6th grade and under masking, and the rest optional? Or bring an item, you know, at our regular board meeting, we can amend any, you know, if I brought that and you said, no, we want it optional for everyone. You know, we would make, at some point, take different action. But tonight, we can only have, you can only vote on what is put out on the agenda. Rox?
Um, yeah, Kevin, I hear what you're saying about what you know in terms of some districts saying that they may make it optional. But I guess for the sake of the public and whoever is reading these, the minutes and watching the Zoom, I think it's important for, maybe there is some clarification, that there are probably plenty of schools that are already saying they're leaning towards masking too. I would hate to have people go away in our community. And if we vote one way or another and say, say we voted for this, and then all they heard from you was kind of a summary saying, people that I've heard of are saying they're probably going to make it optional. I think we need to make sure that people hear, there are probably plenty of districts that are going to go with masking too. I just don't.
It is very tough. I just found the group, which is Northeast Minnesota Soups that I meet with weekly.
Right.
It was the number one conversation last Thursday. And again, other than Duluth, as far as I know at this point, no one's actually taken action. So I can't say for sure the majority felt it was going to be optional. I talked with one, I'm going to say fairly close district. Again, they haven't acted. Superintendent felt most likely it's going to be optional. Maybe that changes, you know. I'm just telling you what I know at this point.
Okay.
Across the board, the same thing. If you look at MSBA, the news clips, I believe there's only one that I saw yesterday or today that, you know, I've seen that has taken action not to. I haven't seen where any other besides Duluth had taken action to require either. I'm just telling you what I know. When it's all said and done, I agree. I'm sure there's going to be groups on both sides. There's going to be some in the middle where, you know, they probably, you know, for the group that's not able to be vaccinated, 12, under 12, you know, I think there'll be some places in the middle too, where they require for that group and not.
Right, there will be, I mean, the news does show that there are going to be plenty of places that are going to require masks.
And the governor or some, you know, may step in as well between now, you know. I can share, again, this is from MASAA, the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. Again, it only has 117 responses from districts. And again, it asked anything from, are you going to require, you know, people, meaning staff, to tell you if they've been vaccinated or not? You can't go further than that. There's questions on masking. And again, the majority, but again, I don't feel this is real. I would attach this, I don't feel it's real accurate. It came, this came about two weeks ago, prior to the recommendation. So all I can tell you is, you know, like I said, what I'm hearing. I will share, again, I, and I'm not going to, I believe, we have maybe on here or not, I did, you know, ask the question from the school nurse as well. And I'm just going to tell you, I'm looking for what it's worth. She feels, you know, the under 12 population, you know, that probably should be, you know, required. The Delta variant, again, is 200% more transmissible. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's a hard decision to make. I personally think the safest thing is to require masking, especially in K-6, because they haven't had opportunity to be vaccinated. The other thing to keep in mind, if someone does get ill and tests positive for COVID, and both were wearing, meaning close contacts, if they're both wearing, we don't have to do the, you know, isolation piece. If you look through the comments from staff, you know, the tough part, looking at the comments, again, we don't have names on there, but it appeared to me, most of the elementary teachers want kids not masked because they want to see the face, you know. And more of the high school, I'm assuming was, were in favor of requiring masks. And you'd think it would be opposite, where, you know, the group that could be vaccinated, you know, you lean more to, okay, it's more optional possibly, and the younger that can't. But again, it's, that's just some reading into it. I can't guarantee, it's just the way, when I was reading through all of them, you know, the ones that are saying, hey, I want to see my kid's face. There are other pieces to it, you know. The health is one thing, mental health is another, and I don't have the crystal ball. And I've told some of you that. I wish it was more of a, you know, finance question that I felt I had a great grasp on, or, you know, had solid, you know, this is the best for our district. Again, what happens because of the decision, I can't tell you. Meaning, I've been told some people won't come either, you know, depending on which way it goes. I don't know what to tell you. And, you know, distance learning is a whole nother conversation we'll have. In fact, I might as well throw it out there. We're not allowed right now to do distance learning like last year. That is not an option. Now, what is an option is, for the most part, a fast track to be an online provider. It's a, I'm going to call it a temporary license, where we don't have to submit much info compared to being like, if we were trying to be an actual online school, you know, we have to submit a pile of information. I've been through it, so I can't say everything. But, you know, kind of like a syllabus and what you're teaching. And to prove that it's, you know, rigorous course, so to speak, or classes, they're pretty much pushing that off and going, at least for the first semester, you can get going if you want to. Now, again, there's a whole other side to that. I'm just throwing it out there. We have online learning language in our contract. Last year, the governor dictated everyone, you know, could and pretty much had to do it. We're in a little different spot, you know, that for people that get quarantined or, you know, have to be out, we can do distance learning like we did. Because that's like home, you know, like you did anytime for sick kids, provided pack of whatever, we could do it if we so chose. It's that optional. If I, as a, you know, family, want my child to distance learn or online learn, whatever you want to call it, right now, we can't do that. You know, and if we're going to go down that road, not sure what hurdle we're going to get into. You know, we can apply. I can get a license very easily right now. But we're going to have to figure some other pieces out. Because I know it's not popular from staff, and I understand that. Because, you know, people are hoping to get back into group work and being able to leave their desks, you know, not to be strapped to the computer.
Well, I just think that it's important to recognize that each day, it seems like things are getting worse with the virus, certainly not better yet. And if we look at, and I feel like I have to say this before we vote, if we look at people who are fearful for their lives or people who are not fearful for their lives, and which one we're going to support, it's a no-brainer. We really need to support people who are fearful for their lives, in my opinion. But I will now leave the floor to someone else.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yep.
I just want to make sure I understand what you said about distance learning. So if my child, like last year, chose to stay home and distance learn, that's no longer an option, agree with you?
The legislature did not give us that option.
Okay. But if she was quarantined for two weeks, the school could choose to do, maybe her teachers could have chosen to, we're going to, we're going to let you at least listen into the lecture, kind of thing.
Exactly.
Okay, that's all I needed.
Yep. And I guess I'm hopeful, you know, it's just a new form. We had a person that was going through some treatments, probably three, four years ago. And majority of the teachers were willing to do something. It wasn't Zooming, I'm an equal as FaceTime or whatever. You know, it's not perfect, but meet the medical needs, you know. And again, there might be some that, hey, I want a hard coffee, you know, packet, whatever. We can do that for medically, you know, medical situations without needing an online or a distance learning provider. But for the ones that say, we make a decision, and they then say, well, I don't want my kid there, there we're stuck right now. Like you say, we're going to have to then, no matter which way we go, have some conversation in the near future. And it's going to take more than just us. I think we're going to have to have, you know, other groups involved, meaning teachers, and, you know, what do we want for the district? Are we just saying, no, we're not going to? It's going to be, you know, challenging conversation. Of course, things, again, things get worse drastically. Things could change in two weeks, you know. The governor could be back, you know, with an executive order, is my understanding. It can, it's not as easy, but it could still happen.
So the situation you described is, historically referred to as homebound.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can use anything in our means to accommodate, you know, whether it's a 504, whether it's homebound, whatever, or a short-term period, or I guess even a long-term period if it's medical, you know.
Well, and personally, it pleases me to hear that we're, that we can't, you can't or not, going down the long-distance learning. That's my personal opinion. Here's a question I have for anybody that's been through this. How is this different or not, this period right now, and this decision that we're looking at? How is this any different or not than it was the first round? When you initially chose as a district to wear masks, the court staff to wear masks, excuse me, to wear masks?
A lot of that in the first part was executive order and mandated. And this is, this decision falls entirely, entirely on the local school board. So it is our decision in this case. And it's because we're the one legislating it, so, okay. That's the big difference, right? We didn't have a choice. We actually had a choice. One thing that is different, and I talked to Jen about this earlier, is a lot of the recommendations or guidance were based on, if you have this percentage of people that had active cases or, you know, that type of stuff. And we monitored the numbers, and we adjusted during the school year based on COVID rate going up or down or whatever. That's not the case this year. This time, it's, they have, the CDC has a blanket recommendation and masking. But the CDC can't issue like a direct order, that's not what it's called. But that's what's coming to mind right now. Only the governor and the president, or us, can do that, so.
And just so the group, it is a word. If the motion, or, you know, the motion that's going to come up here around the agenda does pass, we will then follow up with either a policy or a resolution. That's what gives us the power then to require it. Or if some variation of this, where, you know, we didn't need that last year because it was an executive order, you know, it was law, so to speak, and so.
Well, one thing that we did do last year, and we should redo this year or renew it, is we gave Kevin, after our initial plan, permission to adapt to rapidly changing circumstances. So if all of a sudden overnight or over the week and we weren't around the rate spike, he could have pulled all the kids out of school and gone to distance learning without or approval. And then that would have been ratified by the board when, when next, or something like that. So I would recommend something like that going forward, regardless of what we decide, just so we're more responsive. However, in regards to the action item, there's, he's going to have to adapt less fast to unmasking, right? It's not like it's going to be urgent for everybody to pull off their mask compared to putting it on. I guess would be a difference, but that's more semantics, so if we approve that.
And I think what Ted's talking about is, just say, we said masks are optional. But we had a conversation that if, you know, rates or some criteria, things spiked in our area, MSBA was talking about today, you know, having it set up that, boom, you know, we're at this point, this is now what we're going to do. Yeah, the board leaves once a month, or we decided we had to come. But at least you can, you know.
And we had an incident like that, actually, with a sports situation where Kevin made a decision. He did get input from the board, but it wasn't a board decision. And it was based off that we had given him that ability to adapt quickly to that.
Also, the.
Not to push.
Also, another difference is that we have a Delta variant now versus COVID. And we do have at least 400 deaths in children from that, so.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to talk about now, Emily?
Maybe, yeah, just a follow-up question to the, you know, whatever decision is made here today, if there is that rapid-changing circumstance clause, and I'm not sure if that's something we can, I thought I turned it on.
It's onward to seven.
That will be at the, if we make that, that will be at the next meeting, not at this thing.
Okay. No, no matter what decision is made, you know, I think there's going to be a lot more, you know, coming down the pipe too, with Tim Missy and input from other, you know, to figure out the details or the, you know, different pieces. We were talking about lunch, you know, what options do we have? Again, you know, it was pretty, what'd you say? You know, I don't like to use the word dictate. It was laid out very, you know, we had max number in classrooms. We had, you know, the six feet spacing that, you know, had to be, for the most part, adhered to that, you know, that stuff's all gone. Now, again, we're going to try spacing people as much as possible. I mean, no matter if we require masks or not, you know, but there's certain things we're going to have to, like I say, work out and, you know, putting on quote-unquote "plan", no matter what direction we go, you know.
Also, the regarding the Delta variant, it is now easier to spread and from a farther distance, and we've had to do exactly the opposite. We got rid of our extra classrooms, and we put the kids, we're going to be putting them into closer quarters rather than farther away, so.
The CDC, our current recommendation is a three-foot spacing.
Well, you know, there is a recommendation for unvaccinated.
Oh.
And again, it's a recommendation of six feet, you know.
So in regards to this, so I sat through, leave the two to go, MSBA training, I should say training, it was a webinar about back to school. I mean, I had another one today at 1:00. And I sat through that as well, along with, probably read, I don't know, probably 30-plus pages from five different organizations on their recommendations. And so the big takeaway from today's MSBA webinar was that there's local control, right? It's our decision. And then the second was, if you go against CDC guidance, then you need to seek legal counsel to make sure you're not liable. And so from, I've always looked at it from a cover-your-butt standpoint, and we are, there is a possibility, and this will happen at some district, whether it's in Minnesota or in the United States, somebody's going to get sick, and it's going to be at a school that isn't going to be requiring masks for whatever reason. And they're going to be, there's certainly going to be a lawsuit saying that that school didn't do everything according to OSHA to make sure they have a safe working place. So to me, to me, following the CDC guidelines, there is no legal repercussions that we have unless somebody challenges it on a constitutionality basis, which supersedes everything, of course. And then in that case, we're not going to be the only ones getting sued on a constitutionality basis. So to, for best legal protection, my takeaway from the MSBA was to follow the CDC guidance.
The flip, and again, I don't just hurt this highly recommended, you know, that piece. There have been others, depending on what you search for is, you know, again, thinking of the worst-case scenario, because that's where you're talking. Say we had, you know, a kid commit suicide, you know, I mean, there's a liability there, hey, if they want to have their mask on. You know, I'm just throwing out that, you know, there's people arguing it from all sides. You know, the lawyer, and I haven't truly asked ours, you know, for their stance or opinion, they're going to say it's highly recommended. You know, if you use that, you're probably, I'm not guaranteeing, probably in safe, you know, grounds. If you require it, if something happens on the flip side, you know, it's a double-edged sword, you know, the governor.
I think it's a double-edged butter knife. One side cuts a lot harder than the other.
Do you think at this time that we should be talking to the lawyer to see what their recommendations are?
We can, I, I don't.
MSBA, so when MSBA recommended, want to talk to your lawyer if you don't follow the guidance.
Okay. So I just, this afternoon, got another email from MSBA, and their summer seminar is on the 5th.
Yep.
And MDH will again be coming up with new recommendations, so all of this might change too.
It could, you know, and, you know, a week ago or a week and a half ago, whatever, there was no more guidance coming. And again, I heard the same thing, that Commissioner Mueller's going to speak, and, you know, supposedly, there could be something new.
Right.
But then again, two weeks after that, it could be something new.
And that's, I mean, all the way up until school starts and then after, it could be, it just. And right now, school bus ride travelers have to wear one all the time, correct?
Federal, there's two pieces, and I highlighted on one of my documents here, because it comes from, however the federal is tied into this, there's two things. One, on transportation, you have to, the second piece is, reporting active cases is a requirement of schools and institutions. Those are the only two, I'm going to say, requirements right now.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Yeah, if you will, right here. Face, face covers, all people are required by the CDC order to wear face covers on all indoor public transportation. Indoor school bus is included in there. And the other is handling a suspected or confirmed case of COVID-19. There's a Minnesota rule, 4605.7070, requires any person in charge of an institution, school, childcare camp to report cases of COVID-19 to the department of, those are the two requirements, so. That is, in effect, the contact tracing is not a requirement right now. Believe it or not, personally, I think, you know, and again, that'll come out with whatever decision, and part of our plan. I think we owe it to our families too, at least to a certain extent. You know, if a kid tests positive or is sick, that we at least, you know, inform like we did last year. It might not, you know, depending on which route we go, it might be easier or it might be more work, you know. If everyone's masked in a classroom, that changes things to a certain extent on who needs to quarantine or who doesn't. But I think that's going to be part of whatever decision, you know, that'll be some of the clarifying pieces to come in the near future of what are we going to, you know, do and be consistent with? And what are we going to, you know, step back from?
I'm concerned about if we use the words "highly recommended", because I think some people may interpret that as, I can wear masks if I want or I don't have to. I think that's real loose, and I would like us to have more tightened rope on that because I really do think that this is a fearful situation.
One thing that, to me, and I don't know, I mean, it's certainly not how this action item's written, but the one thing I would recommend steering clear of is making it mandatory for unvaccinated people to wear masks. For one, it's not the CDC recommendation, but who's going to do the policing, you know? I know that's not, I'm not saying in an argument with what you just said. I'm just saying to say, so who's going to do the policing? Are we going to have the teachers be like, are you vaccinated? You know, that, it seems like such a terrible idea. So to me, it's either all, nothing, or cut off, right? So like Kevin said, 6th grade, and to do 6th grade instead of age 12, because otherwise you're just putting those 6th grade teachers or 5th, 6th grade teachers in that very same position that we'd be trying to avoid otherwise. To have it cut and dry.
Well, there is another option, I think, and that would be maybe having one classroom in each grade in elementary, having a room where it's, where you have masks required so that families who have kids that are, that are. so that families who have kids that are concerned would be able to at least feel somewhat comfortable and the other classes not. That's just an idea. I'm trying to think of anything we can do to help both those. I know what it's like to fear for my child's life. I almost lost my child, and I almost lost my grandchild. I know what that's like. And I think we need to support those over anybody else who is not fearful for life. So I'm trying to think of more options.
Is there, and I'm just throwing it out there, I mean, we had not, you know, done any surveys, so to speak. I mean, would it, would it matter? I'm just asking as, you know, if we surveyed and seventy percent said masking? I mean, would that make your decision easier?
Not for me, because I've already done it based on all the recommendations and MSBA guidance that we've received. It's not based on if people are gonna leave the district or not. I think that's, that's gonna be an unfortunate side effect regardless of what we decide. So as for me, public opinion in this case is gonna matter a lot.
And I kind of, I agree with that too, Ted. I feel like it's not, it's not, it's not an opinion thing. It really boils down to, you know, what's happening in terms of like factual numbers and the situation. And I was just walking up, and I, sorry, and I think it, you know, I think it's still evolving.
Well, definitely still.
Even just, I was walking in, it was notified that CMT was coming, they made a recommendation. And I feel like it's just gonna continue to change, so I agree. I don't think it's an opinion issue, I think it's gonna.
I'm just asking, you know, if there's something that you wanted to, and again, we would never get a hundred percent, you know, survey, but if it was something you wanted, it's something we surely can do, if, you know.
I think like for us, last year, the biggest push in the emails that we got was, let's just get them back in the classroom. That was the biggest thing, let's get them out of their houses in a classroom. And if this is the way that we can do it, is getting a map in just to wear a mask, then let's do it. I mean, let's try it out and see how we do and see where our numbers go from there.
You know, I think about, I read some reports from schools that are down south that have already opened up, and they just opened up and came back and had immediate mask breakouts. And then all the kids end up going out. So, you know, I worry about that too, if there's things that we can do to prevent that and keep everybody in, is there value to that too? But.
Yes, I think we can always say, let's take the mask off if we get down the road. But I think, I think it's harder, I think we should do the harder thing. And that is to say, let's mandate the mask, and then let's, if things go real well, let's talk about it again later.
So for clarification, as this action item is made, does it look like just the way we started the school year last year?
No, because we'd all be like that.
What's that? Yeah, beyond, beyond the kids, being, everybody being there, you know, the requirements for the employees, for the students is the same as it was last year.
For the most part, other than like I say, we have not, it's not part of this. And again, it's one of those things, you think of, what would we do for indoor activities? You know, and I'm just gonna use volleyball as an example, because girls' swimming's in the fall. You know, obviously swimming in the pool, you can't have it on, but would we require, when they're on the deck, would we require volleyball? Would we require, you know, incoming teams to? You know, those are pieces that, you know, it was, and again, we've seen zero for the most part from the high school league so far, you know. And so my guess is their stance is gonna be the same as Department of Health, highly recommend.
Yeah.
You know, but that's something we're gonna have to clarify.
Yeah.
You know, but otherwise, for the most part, yeah, we're gonna have classes back where, you know, we have however many kids, twenty-five and over two, or whatever, which again, they were split into two last year, so everyone's back. Like everyone would be masked, other than when you're alone. You know, like last year even, you could be in, I could be in my office and take my mask off. A teacher could be in their room if it was just them, take their mask off. But once either others are in there or you, they're out, above, you have it on.
And hypothetically, if a student comes and refuses to put a mask on?
That is where.
What's, what happens?
We, we will have a policy or resolution, and it's no different than if they're gonna break another rule. You go there, the board has to take them all the way to expulsion, you know. I mean, that's, that's the reality, and that's why we need a policy, either a policy or a resolution. And MSBA is working on the language for those.
And there are slight exceptions to everybody having.
Well, the medical exemption, you know, that piece.
Yeah, I get that, I get that. I, I'm the scenario where the parents don't, don't agree with it, and don't support it, and that's their way of challenging it.
The challenge will be just like, you know, any other infraction, you know. And it's, it's gonna move a lot faster than some things. You know, you'll be asked to leave and come back and go invade.
Yeah, well, you know, I too feel this is a moving target, and you can pull anybody you want, but you're gonna find out that there's equal amount of people on one side as the other. But that's a moving target. The start-up date for school is not.
Correct.
So we gotta, we gotta take action, so. Anybody else?
I wanted to say, I think.
Okay, go ahead.
Bruce, you said what's different than last year? I think a few things that are different is we have fifteen months of experience at this, and that's been helpful. I think many of us are vaccinated, and we've been able to live a little bit more. And it's super hard to imagine getting back into masks and going back into guidelines because the vaccines offered a lot of freedom. And right now, at twelve-plus in our county, we're at about fifty-seven, fifty-eight percent vaccinated with at least one shot, so, which isn't enough to keep the community safe. So what hasn't changed is that we, we still have to create a, in my opinion, we have to create a safe workplace, we have to create a safe school environment, and we have to, it, it, it becomes a public health thing for our community. And so, and what also has changed is that Delta is a, the Delta variant of COVID-19 is a different animal. And everybody around the country is paying attention to that because they have enough evidence that we need to. So I think what's really also important to note is that last year, we really succeeded in our district. We were in session almost the entire year, but almost everybody, we had an outbreak. We, until our March outbreak on buses, that started on buses, we had a great system that worked pretty well for who was in school. Only half the kids were here at the high school, and the kids were separated more, so it's not exactly the same. But we had a team that really pulled together. Our staff did a really great job at all levels, from the bus drivers and kitchen, to parents, teachers, staff, administrators. And it kept our community safe, and we want kids in person. I think we have to do that, we have to do what it takes to get there, and it was our layered approach. Masks work, but they're not the only thing, and I think we have to say that sometimes out loud because it's not only the mask, it's the mask and some distancing, and some hygiene, and some education, and some expectations, and reporting, and testing, and hopefully some contact tracing that makes sense for the families who are trusting us to have a safe place for their kids. So, and, you know, as each month goes by, maybe we'll have more people vaccinated, and maybe the boosters or whatever we might need will help us fight the Delta variant and anything else. But we, I'm really hoping that having the experience that we had, teachers got really creative, and kids and families were very adaptable. We're very adaptable as a community, and we know that masks limit some things. Nobody doesn't wanna see a smile, I mean, nobody wants this. If you ask, does anybody wanna wear a mask? No, none of us wanna wear it at school. But when we look at the evidence and we look at what we need to do to limit the limitations that masks offer, so we have more strategies to identify kids that are either struggling academically or struggling with their speech, struggling with hearing, struggling with mental health issues. And then together, we can strategize to try to target those needs. We can do it, that part we can do better until we don't have to. And I believe there will be a time where things will loosen up again. Already had a chance of living with that, you know, in the last several months. And I think there's gonna be again, but I think until then, we really have to listen to the experts for the safety of our entire community. And I hope that families that trust us to provide education for their kids and a safe place will trust us that we won't do these kinds of things any longer than we feel unnecessary and that we really do want to educate their kids. I hope that some will, even though they disagree with the mask, I hope they will consider that we're really keeping their child and their neighbor's child and the whole community in our best interest.
Well said.
Anybody else for discussion? Well, you have your time during the discussion of the action item, if you so choose. Well, we'll move on to the action item then. We have an action item, as it reads, require all students K through twelve and staff without medical exception exemptions to wear a mask while in district buildings with exception to lunch slash snack time. Staff will be allowed to remove masks when other people are not present in their assigned area. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved by Rox.
I'll second, Tony.
Got a motion by Rox and a second by Tony. Any further discussion? And we just had it, but this is procedural.
No, and just so the boards are aware, depending on what happens here, we will start formulating, you know, questions, like you say, the sports piece and the other. We'll start formulating our plan, and is it sixteenth of August? I think it's our, you know, we're gonna have more for you, and there'll be more coming after that, you know. So just, just, just any more questions?
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll do a roll call. Tony Corby?
Yes.
Emily McGonagall?
Yes.
Bruce Ralston?
Yes.
Ted Saxton?
Yes.
Roxanne Spohstehde?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
It carries unanimously, seven zero, the, the action item is approved. Moving on now to adjournment at six eleven. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Jen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Tony, I think. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.